So, any discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Wetterau?
Yes.
Yes. Could I get a meeting or a motion for the approval of the treasurer's financial coordinated July 11th, 2014?
To move it.
Support. Well, good evening. Don't have a lot of numbers in front of me tonight. I thought we were kicking off school. I put in front of you a lot of the projects that we're working on this week here. These definitely aren't items that are going to be completed in the next week. One of the items, ASOP rolled out this week. I think I'd be misleading if I said it wasn't without hiccups. It was a rapidly advanced paperless leave system. We're off and running with it. The initial timeline, as you can all know, wanted to place August 1st. That could not happen with the vendor. So, we are sprinting to the start. And I think for the most part, staff are working through the hiccups that they're going to get their leaves in. There's a lot of features, a lot of enhancements that in the long run, there's no doubt this is the direction we want to go, but we're chipping away and doing it backwards on the implementation side. So, it's been a treat to see the leaves. Major projects, again, some of them are long since approved. Solar project, we're waiting now on AEP. They've started some preliminary construction, but they have to upgrade their circuits. They're kind of a standstill, driving us and the company solar plant nuts with their slope aggression, but it is coming. I guess the benefit is two years down the road, solar technology's improving, so they tell me. So, we're going to pick up some efficiency enhancements there. Probably one of the more important items on the budgetary side, Mr. Kimmel and Mr. Crowe, myself, are planning to sit down this fall and work on capital expenditure plan. Kind of goes hand in hand with some of the projects, the House 264, solar, et cetera. We've talked about tough point issues. We showed building tours. Begin to look at what do we prioritize? What are some of the needs on our physical property plant equipment? And where do we allocate the dollars that we have? How does that monitor budgets, et cetera, in the future? Transfers from general fund to funds, some of the permanent drivers, et cetera. So, that's this fall. I'm looking forward to get into that a little bit. I think it'll help us in the long run, much like the five-year forecast, what we're doing with technology. Capital expenditures can have a way to bite and creep us if we just defer maintenance on those. So, that's kind of the strategy there, get a plan in place and start knocking those out. Anything you want to add on that? Financially for the month, we did get our second half tax settlement up slightly year over year. General fund, including that, if you look at the figures, revenues, 2.6 million, about 200,000 in the whole overall. When you net out, the tax is not unexpected for this time of year. Catching back up, paying some things off against severance off books as well. Overall, we're on track. Next month, we'll have the appropriations slash budget ready to approve, and then we'll be turning on the five-year forecast sites beginning in October. So, a lot of work in front of us, but we're checking ahead. Okay. Any questions, discussion? All right. Thank you. Roll call please. Ms. Wetterau?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Yes. We do have an addendum to approve today, so if I could get a motion for that. So, do you have any discussion on that? I'll cover it. Okay. Roll call please.
Dr. Johnson? Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Wetterau?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Moving on to committee reports. Mr. Stone?
This month, OSBA magazine legislative report is titled Legislative Breakfast Offer Opportunities to New Candidates. So, there will be a report, and if breakfast and that comes, that's my report.
Thank you. You're welcome. Mr. Schiefer and Ms. Wetterau with the athletics.
Well, I'll start. Tracy would like to. Well, we're, all sports season is already underway. Our first year in the new N-10. And a couple of things of notice for, they're coming up tomorrow. Tomorrow evening, the girls have a volleyball game at home against Mohawk. Girls tennis team plays a match tomorrow evening against Marion Harding. And coming up for the weekend, on Saturday, the boys and girls' South Texas Invitational is out at the fairgrounds. For those who want to go out and catch a good cross-country meet, there's going to be over 30 teams participating, both high school and JV. Starts at nine, first race is at nine in the morning. And the football team has their first game of the year this Friday evening over at Galleon. And encourage everyone to, who can make it over to Galleon, to watch a good football game, get the revenue off to a good start this year. We wish coaching staff and the kids healthy and great and come back with a win. And want to thank those who came out last Wednesday for the open house and also the community pep rally where all the sports teams for the fall were introduced. And it was culminated in the evening with the ice bucket challenge for ALS, and it was quite shocking. That concludes my report.
Just a couple of things I'll add. I believe, at least for the first time in the 32 years I've been in Cyrus, we have a girls' golf team this fall. I think there's six girls on it. So, I think that's, that's great. That's a huge accomplishment there. And I think what Coach Strikers told you.
Yes.
And don't know any of the records. I know we're well into tennis and golf and volleyball. I do know cross-country, our girls were second out at Crawford on Saturday, and our boys were third. And I too share with Mr. Schiefer, wishing all the sports ball teams much success and good health and best of luck.
I forgot. I forgot two items. Two upcoming meetings coming up. The athletic boosters are going to be holding their meeting Monday, September 8th at 7:00 PM. So, now's a good time if you haven't been involved with the athletic boosters to stop and stop out on Monday, Sep- Aug- September the 8th and catch one of their meetings. And also, the athletic council will be meeting on Monday, September 22nd at 5:30 PM. We'll have an update for the board at our next meeting.
All right. I can comment that the volleyball teams, both JV and Varski, are 2-0 in the league. So, I hope they can keep that going. All right. Move on down to Dr. Johnson.
Well, if you've been reading the papers this past week, you know that there's been testimony, it's in the House, the Senate, or somewhere down in legislature regarding the bill to nullify the Common Core in Ohio. This past week, educators, including super intensive teachers, have been testifying in opposition to that bill and support of the Common Core. And it'll be interesting to see where that goes. I know, obviously, there's an emphasis on basic content, but there's also an emphasis on critical thinking skills. And I'm thinking, maybe that's what the opponents object to.
To be honest with you, it's, yeah.
Because if you critically analyze this whole issue, you realize districts have lots of latitude. And really, it's prepared kids for a career in college and think critically and problem solve. And that's what we want to do. So, keep an eye on that.
Okay. Thank you. My report will be short, as we've not had a meeting as of yet. Backpack program is set to kick off next week. And we received a grant from the United Way. I can't speak specifically to it. Perhaps Dr. Burke can address that.
I don't know the exact number figure, and this was the first year that the backpack program had applied for United Way funds. Crawford County has United Way in Crawford in the past couple of years. But I believe, and where are you, my bill, how?
Fifteen. Or fifteen now?
Probably $15,000 for that program. And, you know, being part of the board, not being part of the selection committee, just hearing and seeing the notes, very impressed with the work that our backpack program, what they do. And said it's a model program for other programs to follow. So, nothing but great things from the United Way board on our program that we have here.
And I would remind folks, next week is the United Way kickoff campaign. And so, if, obviously, this is a great opportunity to donate to an organization that's come back and assisted our kids and our families in our district. So, I would appreciate to support the United Way efforts.
And there's some information about the fundraising efforts happening in the high school office. I believe there's a couple days at Bob Evans, that your proceeds are going to be able to go to the United Way. So, we have some information in office if anybody's interested in that.
And I, one last thing. I know there were several football players that showed up to unload the truck here. What was it, last Friday?
Friday.
Last Friday unloaded 2,500 pounds of food. So, thank you to those kids for stepping up and being involved in that program. And as always, as we get rolling, we need packers, stackers. I'm not sure appropriate terminology, but all the help they can get. And that ends my report. And we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
President Burke, members of the board, happy to report a very smooth start of the school year. Kudos to the administrators sitting on the side of the table, their hard work and dedication to get school year start off on the right foot. Anything that you two would like to say regarding your buildings and the start of school?
I don't want to jinx it.
Been a pretty good start. Looking forward to getting back into, hopefully, full capacity come Tuesday. You know, we're a woman down in the office. I think we're probably right to find that on today's agenda.
Now, it's two men, isn't it? That's for Dr. Johnson. Are you ladies?
But I will say that, you know, that Mr. Dennis and I, you know, we're talking about if we had to pick a team MVP at this point, I will say publicly that highly roll our data secretary. Without her, we wouldn't be ready to open. And that lady has done a tremendous job at high school, getting us ready. I was just telling Mr. Cook and Mr. Kimmel that we have a lot more kids enrolling than withdrawing, which is a good, a good problem to have. I think our, hopefully, the numbers will bear out that where our numbers are up, and that's a good thing. But that's a lot of work to get kids out, get schedules in. And I know that she's helped out the elementary and has done a tremendous job down there. If we can clone her, I would repeatedly to get her help. So.
You gotta ask permission.
So, but she's done a tremendous job. Unsolicitedly.
But how many of us should do that? She keeps me straight.
That and I are on the same page.
Well, yeah, the new staff have picked right up. And it just, it has felt good to have a smooth start to the year. So, kudos to the entire staff and everyone in the office. They do all the work, and they make you look good. That's it.
I'll offer that right now, we're waiting to get final numbers, but it appears that we have a kindergarten class in excess of 130 kids. Yes. And so, very pleased with that. And with process in place, I believe over 100 of them were already screened and ready to go before class got off and going. Also, we are in our preschool. There's room for 96 children. And I believe we're going to be filling all of those places and still having approximately 15 more on a waiting list. I keep trying to convince Robin Showers that we will clear out the conference room, put some desks and tables in there, and we can use her help, to which she politely declines. But, you know, so it's one that in the first five hall, or five, first five rooms going down that hallway, you've got over 225 kids. And so, excellent there. We too, and my wife is shared. It's kind of one of these, I've never seen her before, but, and of course, it's just one of those things, obviously, with this being the year of our new secretaries, it'd be the time to do it. But she enrolled over 30 children from Wednesday, a week ago, through last Wednesday, that, you know, and they've said, we're getting open enrollments in. We have folks following their children to work. Folks from, you know, where are you coming from? Shelby, Willard. And what are you doing? We work in town. And so, we're bringing our kids here.
That's awesome.
And so, that is very positive. It's one where, and I would agree, the staff is coming together. I also would like to comment publicly, as you folks did when you came to visit, I'd like to compliment our custodial and maintenance staff. A lot of you likened the building to the way it looked when it was opened after being renovated, and that's to their credit. So, we want to thank them. As far as our office staff, it has been, I guess we'll say on a platoon type thing. We did benefit and thank Dr. Burke for sharing Mrs. Roll, and also Mrs. Bruce Ball and Mrs. Gebhardt, who are not, you know, necessarily scheduled to work during the couple weeks before school, in the transition while we were awaiting folks going through their two-week notice time. And they came in, and we're having central office staff come our way to help with training. And so, you know, it's one of those things that you talk about how busy we are. We've got sometimes four, five, and six support staff in the whole office, including Mr. Cook today. And as far as, and they're busy. And so, we're very pleased. Off to an excellent start. We are still trying to work our way through some growing pains with regards to parking. The nice thing is, is I never thought I'd be so thankful for a gravel parking lot. But today, the church next door needed their own parking lot for an activity, and we were able to get everyone on our site. And still, and thanks to Mr. Shavelier, I was over at ET Pez meeting at Mansfield. But I think between he and Mr. Sauter, we had probably seven or eight cars parked strategically. We're still, the nice thing about this is it's given us a chance to, to work our way through things and see how we can do it. One final note, I talked to our kindergarten parents, and if you come and you see cars, all the, all the lines that are painted in our southeast parking lot, I'll just say, go this way. But when the people come in, we tell them to park this way so that they're angled to go right out into the alley. And I told, I said to the kindergarten folks today, I said, now, you know, here's the principal telling you, don't pay attention to the lines and park a crossway. And I said, now, that applies only on this property. I don't want to hear from the police department that you're double parked up to Alstair. And Mr. Roll said, the principal said, don't worry about the lines. So, we have had a good time. Had half our kindergartners come in today. The other half will come in tomorrow. Same thing with our preschoolers. And Friday, it's all hands on deck, and we're ready to get after it.
Mr. Shavelier, is there anything you'd like to add with special ed? Picked up on. Scrambling a little bit for speech and language here at the beginning of the year. One young lady from last year was left, but then she was going to return, but then her mother fell very ill. So, at the last minute, she could not return. MOC didn't have anybody for us. We're not going through another party, and they worked very well with us. And we had one lady start last week, and she's already hit the ground running. And I will say that the SLPs from last year had set them up so somebody could just walk in and pretty much take over. And we have a young lady starting tomorrow. So, that'll reach our 2.4. And then the new teachers that we have in special ed already, they're just good people. I can't, last year, we had great new people, and this year, we have great new people, and they just seem to hit the ground running, and it makes it easier for me.
So, these new teachers that come in are just.
And they're on fire.
They're ready, they're, they're ready.
Yeah, they're ready to go. They seem very well prepared, and they don't seem overwhelmed. As I remember my first day, I was a little nervous. They don't seem nervous. They just, they just go. And that's great. So.
Awesome.
The contract that Mr. Shavelier's speaking of is Pro Care. Tonight on your board agenda for your consideration, you can blame a number of these contracts on Mr. Shavelier. But really, it's, it's, there's lots of, lots of support for special ed students that require services. And that's a number of the business items on contract for tonight. So, but I do appreciate that. I am going to ask Mr. Anderson to speak briefly in a second, after I touch on a couple other areas. With regards to our Sprint contract, if you remember, the board approved a contract in the spring for some additional laptops that have cellular connectivity through them. We were utilizing E-rate to get them at a much reduced cost. So, instead of $49.99 a month, we're actually going to pay $10 a month for that plan. So, for $120 per year, two-year plan, we have $500 device handles to the kids. They can take their online curriculum at school or at home. It raises that hurdle of not having a device or not having connectivity. What about three weeks ago, the FCC changed the requirements that will allow reimbursement for E-rate. Not for this year, but for next year. The issue becomes if we, if we follow through with this two-year agreement with Sprint, yes, we'll be eligible for E-rate this year, but not next year. So, now, all of a sudden, instead of being $10 a month, we go to $49.99 a month. And they're capping any use of data off campus, and we charge an extra for that. So, really threw us in quite a, quite a mix. We're not willing, we're not willing to stick our neck out for the unknown for next year.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, we have changed directions again. We are sticking with Verizon for the mini Wi-Fi piece to take care of any kids that are in adoptions program that cannot, that do not have connectivity at home. It is a $40 per month expenditure. We've asked, we've asked our E-rate consultant for what's called a change, a spin number change, which could allow us, because Sprint changed the game, changed rules in midstream, we may be able to get this next year E-rated through Verizon to help defray the cost of the connectivity piece. Still, we have to work out the device angle. We do have a Chromebook, believe it or not, Apple device, come in to pilot. Chromebook?
Yeah.
Yeah. Google, I'm sorry. A Google Chromebook come in as soon as possible. Mr. Cook ordered it. We'll see if it can handle the curriculum for our mentum program. If it, if it does, we may invest some capital into those. They're about $200 devices. So, it may be able to handle all the needs that we have. So, we're also looking at Verizon for some, some laptop capabilities too. But really threw us off track, so to speak, when they made the changes with the FCC three weeks ago. So, disappointing from that standpoint. We are still able to do the things that we, that we're, we'll plan on doing in-house. We're still able to take care of those individual situations where kids have, have to take some online curriculum at home. We are able to help them up with a Wi-Fi device and a used laptop in the district so they can continue working. But it, it kind of changes the direction that we want to head with that program.
Real quick, on the E-rate side, we get a lot of funding for phone lines, et cetera. Now, subsidies to E-rate. Those are going to go away over the next five years, 20% of years. We're going to see some uptick on those. One of the plans we had looked at with our technology direction next year was voice over IP. Well, E-rate gained the funding on that. Their big push is now focusing on broadband, rural broadband, getting schools connected faster, better access to the internet. So, basically, the funding's going to be there to build a really robust wireless network, servers, switches, circuits, et cetera, which wasn't available before. It was a priority two type funding, which was not available this year. So, they're really shifting gears on this whole wireless piece and focusing more on the in-house. Good, bad, and different. It's in a comment period right now. They haven't made a final ruling, but everybody that seems to be connected or in the know with that says this is how this is going to shake out.
So, we'll keep you updated as, as we find more information out about that. So, we're kind of fortunate that we, that we caught it when we did, because we would have signed a two-year agreement with Sprint. And while year one would have been reimbursed through E-rate, year two, we had been really, I don't know, I don't know, with that, potentially open ourselves up. Instead of exposure around $18,000, could have swapped well over $60,000 for those devices.
That was going to be my question. You talk about capital investments, and what, what kind of investment are we looking at? Do you really know?
We budgeted $18,000 this year for, for devices slash connectivity. So, what we're going to do is see what's the best bang for a buck. What can we do laptop-wise or device-wise? In-house use, I'm not worried about, because we have a robust wireless system in place now. The connectivity in-house doesn't worry. So, we just need to, we don't necessarily need the cellular plan for the devices in-house.
Sure.
And we have a small portion of our kids that need that support at home through our adoptions program. So, we're not ready to go one-to-one anyhow. So, we're really looking at using those laptops in-house for use. We would, we had planned on trying to get the PSEO, PSEO kids a device, because we want to provide a center for those kids to take the most rigorous courses, be able to, to, to do that work onsite or offsite. That, we're leaving that door open still for that, that use. But really, as we look to take that $18,000, and Ryan and I are going to try to see what we can, how many devices we can get for that $18,000, so that we still get some devices in our kids' hands.
Yeah, we're going to work hard to maximize it. Try to stay within that figure. If it changes, we'll definitely come back to you guys for approval. Here's the plan and why.
But, so not to ruin on the good things that they had said, but I need to update you there on what's happening in the spring. Second item, right now, we're at 185 completed surveys through OSBA, through the efforts on, at the Brown special, the three days, the open house last week. So, we have, like I said, 185 completed. We have one more venue, and that's the first home football game. We're going, we're going to have the iPads out there and have one more opportunity for the community to take that survey. So, I see us, I see us being well over 200 community surveys completed, which is great news. OSBA will be analyzing that data, bringing it back to us. But at the same time, we're finishing up the target survey for open enrollment out families. That'll be a different type of survey, much more condensed. We're actually going to mail a hard copy to those families, self-addressed, PDF load that'll go to OSBA for them to complete. We have about 250 families that will be receiving that open enrollment out survey. We think that we'll get a pretty good response from that, because it's not coming back to school. And we'll, we'll get analyzed results, but they filled out, they can be honest, and send it to OSBA. And here's a firm that'll analyze the data and bring a report back to the board. So, that should go out. Really, just kind of wrapping up the list. We're giving a few last open enrollment papers from some school districts. I would say in the next 10 days to two weeks, we'll have that completed and sent out to families. And we'll then, we'll hope to get those back and get an analysis back to the board and to the survey committee. So. Last item I would like to report on, not to be confused with Pro, on the, on the survey or tonight, Pro Care is where we're going to get our, our SLPs. Like talk a little bit about Pro Core. Pro Core is a vendor assessment, approved vendor assessment through Ohio Department of Education. I want to say that we've been seriously looking at different I want to say that we've been seriously looking at different vendor assessments for well over two years. We realize that while the D R A provides our teacher with evidence on where a kid's reading ability is and they can make instructional decisions based on that level, we haven't got the same bang for a buck with our C B Ms. C B M is an analysis of where a kid stands with mathematics, kind of rates at a different level. But we found that the teachers are not yet necessarily using the C B M scores to make instructional decisions about the kids. So instead of continually doing something, no reason to continually test kids if we're not going to use the results. So we've kind of went away from the C B Ms. But we're looking for a tool that will provide teachers accurate information of where they stand academically and make instructional decisions based on that. Well, we looked at several different companies that have had a lot of different people in here piloting and looking at different programs and we settled on this Pro Core. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Henderson here a little bit and explain to what this is. The key is we did not force the teachers to do this. We've thrown it out there as an option. And I want to say we, amazingly, we've had a great response. The teachers are tripping over themselves to use this system that's a standard-based summative informative assessment that will provide feedback in areas of social studies, science, reading, and then mathematics for grades one through 12. So I'll let Matt speak a little bit about what this vendor assessment, what it can do for our district and provide a resource for our teachers and our students.
Yeah, we were really looking for a tool, more than the bigger picture of the vendor assessments and how it relates to teacher evaluation. We were looking to get an instructional tool in the hands of the teachers that they can use to more effectively monitor their student progress, whether it's on an individual standard or the entire scope of what the Common Core or the new social studies and science standards demand of our, of our students. And Pro Core, everything that I've looked at in terms of the way it's reported, the number of formative assessment opportunities. And what I mean by that is in between, so at the beginning of the year, the teachers will give a pre-test over all the standards and that content for those students and see where the deficiencies are. And then between that test and the next time they give a summative assessment, which covers everything. This Pro Core system provides individualized standards based on individual standards, formative assessments that the teacher can give to the students online quickly and have the results turn around and use that information instantly to change the instruction that's going to happen the next day. Either to ramp up what they need to do on a particular content or skill or say, okay, these kids have mastered it. Let's, let's not waste any more time on this. Let's keep pushing forward. And when we think about alignment to our high improvement process where we have these weekly teacher-based team meetings, we've discovered too that the information that teachers are gathering, it's oftentimes a frustrating process for them because they don't really, they don't have an effective way, A, to collect the data and B, to really assess effectively what they want the kids to be able to do. We feel Pro Core provides that in terms of the reports that they provide, the quick turnaround time, the scalability or adaptability to what we need as the district. It's second to none to the things that I review. It's an Ohio company based out of Cincinnati. The CEO and creator, I'm on the phone with him every day. He emails quickly. He's great here in Ohio. And it's a, it's an outstanding system. We, it's again, like Kevin mentioned, it's open to grades 12 through 11.
One, one through?
Well, yeah, the program's designed for grades one through 11. We, we're going to utilize it right now in the district, grades three through 12 because we have American government as our 12th grade class. So kindergarten, first and second grade, they have a different, they have a solid plan that they're going to use in terms of what they, how they're going to assess and track student data. But grades three and grades three through 12, majority of the content areas and teachers in those grade levels are on board with this program. And it's now it's a matter of building the student information system, getting it uploaded and then getting the training in for the teachers. But it's going to be an effective instructional tool, I think. The teachers are going to, they're no longer going to have to worry about creating their assessments and taking that time. They can use that, that time for designing instructions, for planning what it is they want to do. And again, it's like Dr. Johnson mentioned, and this isn't, this is aligned to the Common Core. But it's another example of us turning over to the teacher, giving the teachers a tool to utilize in their own way and to shape it in their own way to address the Common Core and the new learning standards without us dictating to them. Again, we invited the teachers to be involved. We didn't mandate this and they're on board. Met with their grade team after school today during their teacher-based team time and explained to them the program and the planning. It's aligning well with everything that we're doing and it's just a way it's going to make teachers' job a little bit easier. There's going to be a learning curve on the beginning of anything to figure out how to get students uploaded and sit down and take the test. But it's PAR-like. It's Ohio Online Science and Social Studies-like. It doesn't replicate those tests, but it really, the rigor of the questions, the critical thinking involved in them. It's going to give kids an online experience prior to taking those online assessments in the spring. So it's a, it's positive all the way around.
One of the things that we had to make sure that was tightly aligned correlates very well with the state assessment. In other words, how well you do on the Pro Core assessment directly aligns with the success or failure you're going to have with the state assessment. So early on, our teachers kind of tools have seen where the strengths and weaknesses are and be able to adapt their instruction to meet those kids' needs. Third grade's actually talking about ability grouping their kids once they get the results back and hitting, hitting the areas that, and I don't care if they're in your class or your class or your class. But we're going to take all white kids and group them across the grade, across the different classrooms to adapt the instruction where they, where they, where they score on here. So what encourages me is that we simply, we've entered it as an administrative team first. We, they got all of our answers to questions and we turned it over to the teachers and said, hey, you're not being forced to do this. This is totally voluntarily. Take a look at the website, take a look at the questions, take a look at the assessments. If this is something that fits your needs, we're going to get behind it and back it, back it. And at this point, we have about 75% of our teachers that have thrown their support behind this. A majority of the costs are going to be offset through title funds. Very little general fund money is going to be expended based on, at this point. Way we believe is sustainable moving forward. At this point, the cost is five bucks per subject if you do one subject. All we have, if you do four subjects, is $15 per student. So you're looking at roughly about a $10,000 expenditure. But once again, you get the pre-assessment, you get your post-assessment and you get all of the short-cycle assessments that are quality assessments. What we do know is you could write a great student, you could write a great S L O where you know exactly where the kids are at. You can write, but if you have a flawed assessment, the results that you get are going to be not accurate. Having gone through one year of S L Os, what we've seen is that while kids are scoring very well on those, that's not necessarily carrying over to success on the state assessment. So what we do need to do is to pick up the rigor of the assessment and use the results from that to make instructional decisions. And I'm very impressed with this company and the school districts that they have worked with have shown sustained gains every year that we've used it.
Does Pro Core, does it break down for the teacher when they get that, those results by student or as a whole, so they can identify those students that are having trouble individually?
By standard.
By individual standard, individual student. We could break it down by, you know, we know what our subgroups are in this district. So we can look at our disadvantaged students and we can look at our gifted population's doing on the standard to break that all down. It's really kind of a voluminous reporting system that they have, which is the most appealing part of it. And then good thing, I mean, our teachers understand the assessment is one thing. That's not, that's not the purpose. The purpose is what they do with that assessment information. Our teachers understand that. I think that's why, that's why they're on board. This, this assessment takes that confusing piece out of creating assessments and lets them focus on instruction now.
And they can use that assessment creatively as their one.
Right.
So it's part of the teacher buy-in, the fact that student achievement is now part of the teacher evaluation process?
I believe so.
So if you're not buying into it, maybe do that at some risk.
That's, that's what I think.
What we didn't want to do is we didn't want to go into a situation like this by doing thou shalt do this. We want them to have buy-in and not feel like they're being forced into making this decision. But what we did know is once a few teachers started to utilize and take a look at it, it was going to spread. And once again, this is, this has come as a creation of discussions they had at the T B T level, the Goody level, C I P level, and the district level, C I P level, with their frustration not having a quality assessment to measure the kids. And so we searched high-low and we feel this is the best option at this point. Another angle that we were looking at when we started investigating is that no longer are we going to be given the Explorer Plan, the A C T Explorer Plan, because the A C T is walking away from that couch readiness assessment. So we were looking at vendors to see what we can do to replace that. There's the A C T Aspire, which is an option. What we do know is that probably every junior will be taking the A C T, probably the A C T as a junior, being paid for by the state. So we were looking at a light product to give us a measuring stick of where kids are at with regards to their readiness. And we think that this is a quality tool that can serve a couple of purposes with giving kids information. So, and it is, it is online assessment-based. The nice thing about the short-cycle assessment, it correlates very well with our assume response devices, our clickers. And we've been, a lot of those have been sitting on the shelves collecting dust. And then if we can get those back out and you could have a class of 30 kids take the assessment and have immediate results back on those kids before they walk out of the classroom.
Are there extended response, short answer type questions?
On the, on the Form A test, the reassessment and the post-assessment.
Those are, the scope, the, all those assessments are in multiple choice. But within those, the response, the, there are opportunities for students to have to think critically. We've, I mean, it's not, like I said, it's PAR-like, so there's no short answer and standard response per se, which, but those go out of the window anyway at once because there's no more O A A and no more O G T. We think the teachers have enough of a handle on that that they can do that in their own teacher-created assessments. We're looking for a way to measure how the students are doing against specific standards and those larger skills. If you mentioned, how are they, how are they comparing informational texts and making inferences and writing extended pieces to the teachers? The teachers can do that in their, in their classroom. But those aren't, those aren't particularly specific to this, this Pro Core system.
We will have a formal recommendation on next month's board agenda for your consideration for this program. Reason it wasn't on tonight is that we still have teachers that are reviewing it, having grade-level meetings to discuss whether or not they want to take part in it this year. So there will be a formalized resolution at the next board meeting for your consideration of this program.
Before we vote on that, can we get a look at what one of the reports might look like? I think that would really.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I could send all of you a, the website login code so that you can go to whatever grade level you want to and see, you can see where, and I'll explain where to click within there so you can see what it looks like. And then, and then send a sample of course to.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. So not to put anybody on the spot, but to take a step back. What's your opinion and what feedback are you getting from teachers regarding Common Core and PAR?
Well, I, you know, we haven't really, I haven't really had discussions with teachers about what they feel about Common Core. I mean, I have my own opinions about House Bill 597 and what the discussions are down there. I think the teachers, my impression is that teachers would like to have something that they know is going to be in place for more than just this school year. And I think that's part of the frustration.
That's where the discussion is now.
Right, right. So what, because what we're talking about is if five, if House Bill 597 passes, next year, in the following year, our students will be taking Massachusetts pre-Common Core standards that we'll be utilizing. And then over that course of time, then Ohio will develop their own standards that are going to be superior or whatever to Common Core. So if you have a freshman.
You mean the student come from the federal government on that?
I mean, it's, I guess, I think constitution. We're all in the same boat about, we're just confused about what is the direction for Ohio? If I'm a teacher in Ohio, what should I be thinking about in terms of my career as a teacher? What am I playing for? What, are we going to be running through the cycle of change year after year after year? And what, that just becomes entirely frustrating because we, then administrators, we put this expectation on you. You need to teach these things and we need you to support our students this way for this year. Now next year it's going to be completely different. And, you know, we're always preparing for something new and I think that's a frustration that I feel. I think the teachers feel it. Right now, we're just living in this Common Core world for 2014, 15. I'd like to stay here for, you know, beyond.
There's confusion over the, like I talked with the teachers. All of a sudden, there's a big fight over these standards. We've always had them, always, since I've been teaching, there's been standards. Now all of a sudden, it's, it's an issue and then there's a lot of myths surrounding, you know, the internet news and stuff. It's just confusion on the part of, what's the problem? You know, seriously, what's the problem? And I never get a clear explanation. Everybody's just confused while there's constant fighting over Common Core.
Exactly. It's all political. It's a bunch of people who are not educators, not teachers, not, they're lawmakers who are standing and acting like they know what they're talking about and just being talking heads making problems or there aren't any.
And the amount of money the state has invested in this and the amount of. And the amount of money that local school districts have invested in to prepare for this.
Absolutely.
And now that it's all gone. It's a lot of time, a lot of effort that, you know, Ms. Stanfield before, you know, she had left and what Matt's picked up and kind of carried the torch and what he went through. You know, this has been a process and it was, a lot of time and effort has been spent to see it go away. And then to have another system for two years, which is Massachusetts' old system. And now where's Massachusetts?
Their Common Core.
Their Common Core.
Massachusetts' Common Core.
So, so we're going to spend two more years using something else that Massachusetts doesn't want to use so that the state can spend more money figuring out what they want to do.
Or not want to do.
Or not. Maybe two years we'll be back to Common Core.
And it's not easy to tell feature. Here's a brand-new set of standards to use.
Oh, that'd be awful.
There needs to be some training they need to have that, you know.
And that they're also going to be evaluated on.
Part of the era.
Yeah. I even think.
Yeah.
Exactly. I didn't, obviously I didn't put you on the spot. All having a team.
All right, before we move on, I just wanted to acknowledge everybody that was involved in the open house and the pep rally and all that stuff. I've heard nothing but positive feedback from that. The pep rally was very well attended, I thought. Recognizing the middle school athletes and teams. It was, it was just very well done. So I'd like to congratulate you on that. Thanks for the effort. All right, I don't believe we have anybody.
I have a question and I'm going to put this down because it's mostly just personal curiosity. But since we're on the subject, does anyone else feel like that an incredible amount of energy and money is going into the methods and modes of testing and assessment as opposed to actually imparting knowledge?
Has this incredibly common sense approach that no one wants to take?
You're absolutely right. It's the most, it's the most basic and fundamental principle that I think the legislature is undermining.
If an assessment could become, if it ever becomes a not-for-profit endeavor, you know, nonprofit endeavor, that may, that may change. But there's a lot of money tied up, like Dr. Hert mentioned, in the park consortium and purchasing assessment models and systems and just people making money by it.
But there, you know, and there is, and don't get us all, you know, don't get me wrong or anything.
No, like I said.
It's that there is a place for accountability. There is a place for assessing. There's a place, there is a place for that. But are we over-saturating ourselves with, you know, because you look at how many assessments our kids are going to take. And I know Mr. Henderson and I have looked at, you know, without, I guess, a few more devices in our district, it's going to be very difficult to even assess our kids in a timeline given. And we're assessing it in March and it just, but there is a lot of money that drives this. And I think the idea of accountability and achievement and growth and measuring our kids, that's all great things. But I think sometimes you get swallowed up by the profit that companies can make. But.
Right, well, it just seems like when someone enjoys the process too much, that I get suspicious.
It reminds me of like the voter ID laws. It reminds me of like the voter ID laws. When all these, you know, you had to start showing up with your, with the picture ID. There were forty-two million votes, some odd number of votes in the United States. There were six hundred and fifty cases of voter fraud as a result. We have sweeping legislation across the country because there's a voter fraud problem? Is that even, I mean, is that even a statistic? Six fifty out of forty-two million, really? We're talking about the greater good here. You know, what do we do, what are we doing for the greater good? How are we helping teachers? Not how are we undermining their ability to teach and be creative and help kids? I was lucky enough to have Ms. Wetterer as a teacher. She was phenomenal and it was because she was saying she had a beard. Well, I didn't want to go shitting. I still came here on my left and right.
That was right.
That was not a shitty law.
You can write that down.
Yeah, she was allowed to be creative and allowed us to be creative. I just don't see that happening as much.
And don't forget the stress on the kids. I'm telling you, I have elementary-age kids. Last year my son was in third grade, he was literally a nervous wreck about the third grade guarantee and I was like, why, why? You know, and I don't think the teachers are sitting there saying, gosh, you've got to-
Yeah.
But in preparation for it, they pick up on all that.
They do.
They're very intuitive.
Absolutely.
And my son was losing sleep and I felt awful and I see it at the elementary, you know, you try to keep it as nice as possible, but those poor little guys, they get all the stress and I just-
They want to do well.
They do and they're worried and that is for no reason. And I'm telling you, thirty or forty years ago, we had some pretty great doctors, scientists, engineers before all this testing that came out.
Best economy in the world, best military in the world, and school was fun and-
Yes.
And learn.
Absolutely.
And it seems like that's gone away.
And still, Pat, my, since my cynical suspicion is that the goal is to make everything so that you can just look at a piece of paper and say, without having to do any sort of critical thinking, to use the term of the night, well, this school is doing well because this number exceeds whatever the flavor of the month is.
And I'll just close with one comment. The end-of-course exams, the assessment that they're given, when are the results due back on those assessments?
We'll give those in the spring of 2014. They're due to be back September of 2000, excuse me, spring 2015. We'll get the results back in the following September.
Yeah.
So what is the timeline rate?
What is the purpose for assessing kids?
It's the timeline rate.
To wait four, five, six months to get the results back to see how the kids did?
The next school year is already done.
It's like the bar exam.
So, okay, well, thank you for indulging me. I'm recording.
All right, I don't believe we have anybody to address the board. All right. Moving on to personnel-certified staff. Present, vered members of the board, my recommendation to approve items A and D from the personnel-certified staff section of the agenda. Support. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Wetterer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Yes.
Present, vered members of the board, my recommendation that you approve items B, C, E, F, and G. C being an added item from the addendum and G being a new item from the addendum. So items B, C, E, F, and E.
Can I get a motion, please?
Tell me.
Support. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Wetterer?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
And moving on to personnel-classified staff.
Present, vered members of the board, my recommendation that you approve items A through B, which includes in addition to item E from the addendum under the personnel-classified staff section of the agenda. Items A through E.
Motion, please.
Stone.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Ms. Wetterer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
On to discussion items.
I'd like to have a discussion regarding the bell tower construction. Back last, or February 2012, we had a bill made that was made up myself, Dr. Johnson, Mr. Stone, Rob Neff, Randy Fisher, Randy Clay, Tom Holesout, Jim Guelandwater, and Tina Herman, met about fundraising for the bell tower. This is the reconstruction of the bell tower that would go down to the elementary building. We kicked off kind of the fundraising efforts. We had an initial $10,000 commitment from the Shump Foundation, but due to some deteriorating items, down to Allmiller Park, their, the chimes and the bells, what they call it, there were some needed improvements down there, so they kind of pulled back on their commitment. But just to update you, the sheet that I passed around, there's been six classes that have donated money to the campaign and the current balance is sitting at $1,973. At the time that we met, February 2012, the proposed bell tower construction was around Today's dollars, dollar miles, I'm sure it would probably exceed about $140,000. So we're well short of the fundraising goal. Jan Pride from the Community Foundation has asked Randy Fisher that if, that we should send a communication to these classes and update them on the progress of the fundraising and potentially ask them if they would like the money to go towards another organization such as the Education Foundation or whether they would like a return of their donation. I have a proposed letter that I'd like to share with the board, correspondence thanking them for their donation and updating them where we are with regards to the, to the monies that's been raised. This is one option to go to give them an opportunity to have their monies go towards the Education Foundation or if there's other opinions of what we should do, I'm open to that discussion. A suggestion came to me today that I had not thought about is, since the bell is sitting in storage right now, is there a way to display the bell in the elementary, in the main entrance, if you walk up the steps, in, not necessarily in a bell tower, but in a display? Like, you know, take close to $2,000, build a display, maybe in plexiglass or something, and have the bell least visible at the elementary, which was where the original site was. I liked that idea when I first heard it. I don't know what the feasibility is to put the bell. The elementary school doesn't necessarily use the main entrance, I don't believe, to fire escape, but we wouldn't block any fire escape. We'd try to put it off to the side or somewhere where people could still see it when they came to functions at the elementary school. But I don't feel right with it sitting in storage, but I also know that we don't have the funds to support sticking over $100,000 into a project we have other needs for the district to make.
So would you like to put it down to Liberty Bell?
Yeah. And I don't know what that location would look like, but we, like I said, to follow this, actually, Chris Stone and I were meeting today and Chris offered up as a suggestion to take a look at, maybe we could display it down there inside somewhere in some type of a display case. So I'd have to give it to Mr. Stone, see if there's an area, get the dimensions of the bell, see if there was an area that would not disrupt the coming and going of our elementary students, but still have it displayed where we can tell folks, well, here it is. Because right now we get, well, where is the bell? Well, it's scrapped.
There is, there is.
And that seems a nice amount of money for that.
I like the idea of exploring that.
I do, too.
Then I'll hold on the letter then, if you agree. I'll hold on the letter. What we may is rework the letter to say, you can either, you know, request your monies to be returned because we're not moving forward on the original plan for construction of the bell tower, but we would like to use the funds to do this, maybe do, you know, a little edge of where it would be or maybe have, put something on the website pointing to that, what plans we're kind of looking at there. I think we do need to get it out and display it somewhere, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Another question from the gallery.
Well, I have a suggestion. How big is the bell? Roughly. I know you said you had to mention.
At one time I had the weight and dimensions, but I don't have that to talk about.
Kevin, did you do like what I did with the old school bell?
I don't know what they did with the old bell.
Well, remember when it was, before the tour?
Right.
Yeah. Do like a brick base?
We've-
Is that feasible?
Well, we've been down that road.
Okay.
And the committee at the time felt that the original design of the bell tower needed to be intact. Okay, so we had a less costly avenue to build a smaller version of the original, but that was kind of shot down by the folks that wanted to see it being recreated.
Okay.
So, yeah, we've been down that road. This all, the discussions really started for me back in September 2011 and we've had lots of discussions and different drawings and avenues to look at, but this is just another one. I think that if we can get the bell out there, not cost a bunch of additional monies from the district coffers that we don't have, so I think this is a happy medium if we can do something to display it inside. So I'll look at some options, get some feedback from you before we move forward on anything. I'll keep it on the forefront, let you guys know what's going on.
Okay. Any other communications?
One of the things I'd like the board to consider is rescheduling up our September board meeting. I think I did hear back from most everybody that Monday, September 29th, is the date I'd like everybody to consider rescheduling the September 25th meeting to the 29th.
So, Paul, are you okay on that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think you first, everybody would just go ahead and move it to the 29th. That's why you said- All right. Any other announcements?
I have an announcement. We try to recognize achievement and excellence in the classroom and all that. And we got a communication this week about our superintendent that I think he really needs to be recognized for. And it was pretty incredible what you did getting out there with the family who didn't have the bus schedule at home. You actually went to their home and you delivered that bus schedule to make sure those kids got where they need to be. That's really going above and beyond what anybody expects. It goes above and beyond what's in your job description and just says so much about you as a person. We're a very lucky district.
Well, I don't want any recognition for that.
Well, it's too bad you're here.
It's all in the territory, so it's nothing different than anybody else with you, so.
I beg to differ, but thank you very much for your improvement.
I second that. All right, well, with no other business here, I would like a motion to recess to executive session to consider the appointment, appointment, appointment dismissal, discipline, motion, demotion, or compensation by public employee or official. Come on.
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. We know action after this session. Okay. We are in.